Bishop McCray, thank you for joining us. I know you've been, you've got a lot going on. Would you, would you mind leaving us an invocation?
Absolutely.
Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. O God, our help in ages past, our hope for years to come, our shelter from the stormy blast and the high turn home. O God, we thank thee and we bless thee for this day. We thank you so much, O God, for your grace and your mercy. We thank you for watching over us all day long. Thank you, Lord, for our families. Thank you so much for this wonderful city. Lord bless our mayor and his council. We act right now in Jesus' name, God, that you continue to watch over us as they do the business for this city. Bless all of our residents, O God, even right now in Jesus' name, promote unity within our communities. We give you glory and honor for who you are. In Jesus' name we pray. Can we say amen?
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bishop McCray.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you.
Good to be back.
All right. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, Chapter 4, Title 30, Cody Walls, South Carolina, 1976, an agenda's been posted on the front door of City Hall, and notification of this meeting's been given to the news media. Appears we have a quorum. Can I confirm that? Thank you. All right. First up, we've got approval of the consent agenda. Right? Right, to know that it's within our packets, if anybody's reviewed those, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda, second.
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Dean, and any further discussion regarding the approval of the consent agenda? All right. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda? Ms. Bowles?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries six, uh, the six votes. Six to zero.
Under public hearings this evening, item number one is to consider ordinance number 23-001, amending section 34-93 and 4, the fee schedule and procedures for billing of solid waste from the city of Greenville.
All right. Ben, this is second reading in a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of proposed ordinance number 23-001? The record reflect there are none. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance number 23-001? The record reflect there are none. All right. Do we hear a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance number 23-001.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion by Mr. Miller, second by Ms. Hutto. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number 23-001? All right. All in favor of ordinance number 23-001? Ms. Bowles?
Yes. Affirm.
That motion carries unanimously with six votes.
Under new business, item number one is to consider ordinance number 23-002, which amends ordinance 17014, which adopts certain international codes. So every year, about every three years, the International Code Council will release new additions of codes. You see them listed there, the International Building Code, Residential Code, Fire Code, Mechanical Code, Plumbing Code, Fuel Gas Code, the Electrical Code, and the Energy Conservation Code. We're required by the state to use the most recent published versions and is adopted by the state of South Carolina. We found just a few sort of tweaks that needed to be made to this ordinance to ensure that we're aligning with the state of South Carolina as they make revisions to the code. So we're adopting these codes with South Carolina modifications. We've included language in this ordinance that will automatically adopt these codes every three years when the state adopts them. Permissive codes, you'll see at the bottom, so the top codes are mandatory, and the state says you have to adopt these. The permissive codes at the bottom are optional. There's more than just these three, however, these are the only three that the city of Greenwood is applying at this time. So we are asking council to approve this ordinance to adopt these mandatory codes and these three permissive codes. We're also adopting applicable chapter ones, which gives the building code staff the ability to administratively enforce the codes.
All right. And then we've spoken at length about this. We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to consider ordinance number 23-002, amending ordinance 17-014, adopting certain international codes.
Betty Bowles, second.
All right. Got a motion by Ms. Hutto, second by Ms. Bowles. Any further discussion amongst council? Any other permissive codes we need to be on the lookout for in terms of potential?
In conjunction with, in consultation with our building officials, they're the only three that we feel are applicable here for the city at this time.
Okay. I'm sure there's a number of other potential ones out there that y'all looked at. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of ordinance number 23-002? Ms. Bowles?
Aye, affirm.
All right. Mr. Bass is here now, so that motion carries unanimously with seven votes.
Under new business, item number two is to consider ordinance number 20-23-003, amending ordinance number 18-011, which amends the international fire code. So the ordinance you just approved includes the adoption of the international fire code. However, there are a couple of things that are specific to the fire code that requires us to sort of call this ordinance out and set, and adopt it separately as well. So it's referenced in the ordinance you just approved, and then this separate ordinance addresses only the fire code. It includes some fill-in-the-blank specifics, like city fines and procedures that we use internally. And also, this is a key piece, removes the adoption of the appendices. So prior to the approval of this ordinance, we have adopted several appendices. Recently, our fire marshal, Travis Lathan, has been attending a lot of code classes, I believe he goes quarterly, and it was determined that unless the state adopts these appendices, the city cannot adopt them. And so we need to un-adopt them, and that's what this ordinance will do. It also includes language that says most recent adoption as adopted by the state instead of just most recent addition.
Got you. Do we hear a motion with regard to ordinance number 23-003?
Motion to approve ordinance number 23-003, amending ordinance number 18-011.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Miller, second by Ms. Hutto. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number 23-003? All right. All in favor of ordinance number 23-003?
Aye, affirm.
All right. That motion carries unanimously with seven votes.
All right. Under new business, item number three is to consider ordinance number 23-004, which amends the International Property Maintenance Code. Similar to the fire code, this calls out the IPMC separately, and there's some specific things that I'm going to have Draper cover for you all.
That's right. So really, this is just a cleanup ordinance. It makes a couple of minor language revisions to the ordinance, and it clarifies a few things. Probably the biggest change here is the restoration of the criminal penalty option, as we've begun enforcement under the, under the original, it was adopted a couple of months ago. And in talking with other jurisdictions, it's really nice to have that option. It really helps move things along, so we'd like to bring it back. Like the fire code, it has some fill-in-the-blank items about fines, moving the fine structure to a different section of the code, that it's more appropriate. Again, adopting that late sedition is adopted by the state language so that it rolls over each time. There's a new IPMC that's released. And finally, and most importantly, updating numbering to minimize confusion when new additions come out. Now, there was a meeting on Friday where we met with code enforcement and a concerned citizen who raised concerns about tarps and other temporary coverings. What we'd like to do is propose another amendment to what we're talking about that allows for temporary roof coverings to be limited to 90 days. So like if there's roof damage, you can't just leave a tarp up there forever. It has 90 days, you need a permit for it. And then it would also prohibit it being used for tarps or other screenings, other temporary materials being used as screening, and that would make it a public nuisance so the code enforcement could deal with it. And finally, it clarifies that porches, decks, and carports and other similar open air areas near a home are including definition of premises under the IPMC. This is, we didn't have time to include this in what was sent in your packets, so here's the proposed language. If you would like to bring this in to your vote with what we sent you, it'll need to be specifically included in the motion.
If we want to include the red.
So if you wanted to include this, this language here?
That's right.
You would just make a motion to approve the ordinance 23-004 with this amendment for tarps and premises.
Everything on the screen right now is new language. The red is red just because the premises definition, the, what's in the black in the premises definition is already in the booklet, red just is the addition to that. Everything else is new as well.
Yeah, you have, you don't have to include this now if you don't want to. It's just something that came up, not necessarily recently, but there was a more in-depth conversation about this, I believe on Thursday or Friday. So we wanted to offer it to you as an opportunity, include it now if you want to in the IPMC. Right now, the code enforcement officers don't have any means to address tarps. So if one of you were to get a citizen complaint, as is what happened in this scenario, about a house that just has a bunch of tarps up on their porch and their carport, there's nothing that code enforcement can do, there's nothing in the IPMC that allows for them to say, you can't do that. If council's comfortable with including this language, you can make the motion to include this, it, as, with approval of ordinance 23-004, or you can approve the ordinance as presented to you in your packet, and we can address this later.
I think you answered the question, but the concerned citizen was opposed to tarps being used as temporary coverings in certain situations. Not pro-tarp.
That's correct. They came in and manifested they.
I, I would say, you know, Draper and I have gone back and forth about whether to present this tonight or not, because you all really haven't had a chance to discuss it yet. There may be other things as well. I know that we get questions from council a lot, you know, somebody may say, I got a complaint about somebody with a couch on their porch. Well, there's no provision in the IPMC that says that Mr. Bass can't put a glove seat on his porch if he wants to. So there may be other things, other than tarps, that you all may want to see addressed. Right now, this is the one that's been presented to us as a challenge for code enforcement. We don't have any way to address this.
Just getting back, if you want, if you go back to that previous slide, or may, you know, there we go. When we say reinstating the criminal penalty option, did we have that at one point, then removed it, and we're putting it back?
That's right. So it was a part of our property maintenance code up until October, when we made the original revamp, and then, like I said, when we, speaking with code enforcement officers in other jurisdictions about the options they have, for example, Greenville, they have a fee structure like we adopted, and they've retained their criminal penalty. It gives them options, tools in their toolbox to use to entice compliance. We felt that that would be a good thing for us to have, is have those tools restored.
Sure. Thank you. Do we hear a motion with regard to ordinance number 23-004?
Motion to approve ordinance number 23-004, including the amendment for temporary coverings.
Can we make that as a part of the record, the specific amendment that is on the screen right now?
Yes.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Bass. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number 23-004?
Draper, can you, can you explain to us some of the other criminal charges that could be filed against somebody for these? Can you give me just a couple more examples?
Sure.
Because there was a reason we took that away one time, and if there's any fines opposed or something like that, I think we probably need to understand that a little bit better.
Sure. So the original idea behind removing the criminal penalty was to enable us to focus on substandard structures. There was a little bit of bog down in getting those through the court system. It would delay actual enforcement, demolition ultimately, of said structures. So we took it away. And as we got talking with code enforcement afterwards and their efforts to enforce, we learned that it's, that was overbroad. It's necessary for things like vehicles without tags, or stagnant water, dead animals, odors, appliances, stuff like that. And then as we explored further and talked with Greenville, they described how they left criminal penalty even in place for their, for their unsubstandard structures, and it just allows options. So for example, if this was restored, it would be available to code enforcement to take it that way. We could still choose to only charge an uncompliant homeowner a fine to encourage compliance, or we could take it down the route of a criminal summons.
Does this still keep us at that 360-day goal for, this doesn't prolong that, right? Because that was the purpose of the last change, right? Is it could potentially extend it quite a bit further? This still keeps us at right at a year?
Yeah. Even the, and when we talk, because our ordinance very much mirrored Greenville's, they said that typically for like substandard structures, they typically use the fine structure that y'all put in place in October. It's just that they said sometimes it just, if they know the property owner, or they can have a face-to-face conversation with them, sometimes it's better to just say, here's the summons, and it entices compliance, like Draper mentioned. In talking with code enforcement, our code enforcement guys, they said, you know, a lot of times, we might go to somebody's house for an untagged vehicle, and we let them know, if you don't address this, we're going to write you a summons, and that gets the ball rolling quickly. So it's another tool that's available to them. I don't think until we really, really get into the weeds of enforcing this ordinance, we'll really have a full understanding of when that might be better to apply. I think it's going to come down to how the code officials feel about that particular situation. But like I mentioned previously, the goal is compliance, right? We want, we want to see compliance, we want to see these property owners take responsibility for what they own, and whatever tool we need to use to affect compliance, we want to be able to have it available to our code enforcement officer. So right now, we can write a summons for an untagged vehicle, for tall grass, appliances, anything in the IPMC.
I think it's been made very clear that, I think, speaking for myself, but also part of the conversations that we've had is really related to landlords and, and how they need to take better care of their properties, right? And so this, this will be, put us a step in that direction, but we're still working towards the goal of, of a registration process and all of those goals, right?
Yeah, and there's language in the IPMC about vacant structures that's really going to tee us up to start working on a rental registration process, how to deal with vacant structures that are not actively being rented or renovated, or things like that. So we're, next step. This process is actually taking a lot longer than I had hoped.
And I agree with Mr. Bass. Of course, we want to ensure that landlords take, control their property. One of the challenges is, of course, we have a lot of renters that are already paying way too high percentage of their monthly income towards rent, so we, the challenge is not passing that cost along to someone who's already strapped, you know? I don't know what the answer is, but we continue to search for anything we can do to.
And our staff's already been researching what other communities are doing with vacant properties and rental registry. That's going to come with a cost, it's going to require a staff person to manage that, as far as I can tell. So we're going to have to see, can we manage it with the resources that we have? Or do we need to look to a different process, so?
And I, and I think we've also identified, I still love Ms. Hutto's idea of trying to find the means to help people who cannot afford to fix up houses, especially ones they've inherited, to be able to go. And Ms. Hutto's idea for that is incredible for us to be able to do that. And so it would be great if we could move on, and I think that's been a major priority for all of us here in the past, since our, especially since Ms. Partlow brought it up to us, right?
There's, there's no lending source for it. What happens is, they can't borrow money to do rehab, and that's, or young couples that want to buy a fixer-upper, they don't, it's so complicated for them to get a product, a lending product, where they can actually buy the home and have the, have the capital in order to fix. There is an FHA program, but it's so difficult and so complex that it's really almost counterproductive.
Or in some opportunity, like opportunities where people can't afford anything.
Correct.
We can have some resources to guide them to when it comes to, I mean, there's some churches in the community, there's.
Habitat.
There's Habitat and other organizations that do a lot of work with people that, that need it.
I'll take Habitat's horns. I know they are continuing to build houses, but one of the things they're doing is transitioning to improving and remodels for existing homes. I, certainly, they can't do it on a large scale, but on a case-by-case basis, and I know they want to get that, that program moving where they can do it on a larger scale as well.
Yep. We've met with them about that, too.
Yeah.
There's a real issue with someone that's been living in their home for 40 ye, you know, for 40 years, and they get to, they're on a fixed income, you know, inflation is high, and then they can't put the new roof on, thus the tarp is on the roof for 90 days. So, yeah, we, we, it's unsightly, tarp shouldn't be there, but some of these people can't afford to put a new roof on their house, especially with the cost of asphalt sheens these days.
Well, I think, I certainly think now is as good a time as any, I mean, I think we understand the specific tarp amendment here, but I look forward to any other potential additions that, that y'all can identify for, for future meetings, obviously, and Austin, I know you've done a good job on this. Let us know what, what other ones you think I might, I know we're happy to sit down and take a look at any other potential amendments that need to be made. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number 20? Go ahead, Ms. Bowles.
Okay. Would there, would there be any allowances? I don't see any in this particular ordinance for, when it comes down to criminal intent, and also, I'm like Nikki, if a person is unable to put a roof on their house after 90 days, are we, maybe I'm just, are there allowances for, for a situation like that? For instance, if I, if, if I'm given 90 days, and I may need another 30 days.
Right. So. The building, the International Property Maintenance Code gives a lot of discretion to the building official, and so certainly in situations like that, if the building official was made aware of certain situations like you're speaking of, then provisions could be made for things like that.
Okay.
It just.
I like, and also.
Go ahead.
Also it forces compliance with the criminal intent, because I'm looking at the fact, okay, after your notice has been issued, and trust me, I'm not trying to make allowances for anyone who's violating the code, the old deal ordinance, but they only, they have 30 days to comply, otherwise there's, it's a $10, a $10 penalty per day after 30 days.
Yeah, that's, that's accurate. The, the fine schedule only applies to unsafe structures, Ms. Bowles. So the goal is within that 30 days to affect compliance. And then as far as anything else goes, you know, the code officials are going to speak to, if your grass is tall, they're going to go to you and say, Ms. Bowles, your grass is too tall, you need to get it cut. And before they, they're not just going to go out there and stroke a summons off, they're going to try to get compliance. They don't want to have to go to any more court hearings than anybody else does.
Okay.
And just again, just for the record, we're talking about, in terms of criminal penalties, we're not talking about felonies, we're talking about the lowest level criminal.
They'll go before Judge Miller.
Right.
Then it's up to him. But it typically doesn't get that far for things like that.
All right. But thank you.
All right. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number 23-004? All in favor of ordinance number 23-004 as amended? Ms. Bowles? Ms. Bowles, you might be on mute.
I'm sorry, yes.
All right. That motion carries unanimously with seven votes.
Okay. Under new business, item number four is repealing ordinance 22-006, promoting development and annexation within the corporate limits of the city through the payment of sewer reimbursements. You may recall in March of 2022, city council and CPW voted to re, to reduce our sewer reimbursements in half, so previously they were 1,300, and they were reduced to $650. The city's portion is $250 at this time, and CPW's portion is $400, that's per, per lot that's connected to the sewer, sewer system. At that time, we did discuss removing these in their entirety in the future. The CPW commissioners have discussed it, and they are in agreement to fully remove the sewer reimbursements effective April the 1st of 2023. Previous, the previous time when we reduced these incentives, Jeff Meredith sent a letter to any residential developer that he was aware of that was kind of in the hopper. He intends to do that same thing this time, to send a letter saying, you know. Um, he intends to do that same thing this time, to send a letter saying, you know, lock in if you want to participate because effective four, when these incentives will be going away.
Will, will that, will that notification include both the CPW incentive and the city?
It will address the full incentive, yes.
Good. All right, do I hear a motion with regard to ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero five?
Motion to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero five.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bass, second by Ms. Hutto. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero five? Yeah, I think as long as everybody's notified that this is coming up and they can plan accordingly.
And he did mention that he's gonna go ahead and send the letter out after, if council approves first reading and say that, that it's pending city council approval. So that way there's more time for the letters to get out.
And so that, and the twenty-two dash zero zero six, it repealed the original, didn't it?
Twenty-two dash zero zero six amended the original ordinance and reduced the amount.
So we wouldn't need to, in turn, repeal the original?
Um, I had our city attorney review it and he felt like the language that I proposed here was good, but I'll have him look at it one more time. Do you think it's, it's effective the way it's written? Okay.
That was for the record, affirmative, head nod.
Got to use the resources available.
All right, any further discussion regarding ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero five? All in favor of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero five?
I approve.
That motion carries unanimously with seven votes.
Under new business, item number five is to consider ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero six, which offends, amends the city's zoning map by rezoning point one nine acres of land at ten seventy-six Phoenix Street from institutional professional to high density residential. And I will recognize at this time, Ms. Carol Coleman, Planning Director.
Good evening, Ms. Coleman.
Good evening. Um, this was an application from your man to change the zoning on a piece of property from institutional professional to residential so that he could convert that to a duplex. Um, that entire block where the Department of Social Services is, the old Health Department, was owned institutional professional, including these two residential units. The property surrounding it in all directions except for behind it and, uh, just towards Main Street from it, so to the south of it, um, that's all high density residential now. It follows along with the future land use map. It's consistent with that. And staff recommended approval and Planning Commission recommends approval as well. If you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to address them. I know one question came up as to whether or not this might be another possibility of rental units for people that have been relocated for specific reasons. My understanding was he's proposing to use the existing structure with it being an existing house. I think each apartment would only have one to two bedroom stops.
And with institutional professional IP, you, you could actually still have a single family residence.
Single families allowed. He, he wanted to do a duplex. Technically, a duplex is considered single family attached, but in our ordinance, it separates it out.
Okay. And there'd be sprinkling, you know, I'm assuming in, was it duplex?
No, they have had a firewall though.
All right. Any further questions from Ms. Coleman?
And it was a unanimous vote by Planning Commission.
Has it, has it been used as a residence or was there any institutional professional?
No, it's, it's been residential for as, as long as it's been there.
As part of the block. All right, thank you. I hear a motion with regard to ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero six.
Motion to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero six.
Second. Go ahead, go ahead.
We got, uh, a motion by Mr. Miller. I'm about to give it a second by Ms. Hutto.
No, yeah, that's okay. Don't matter.
We're keeping score tonight.
Very agreeable tonight so far. Um, any further discussion regarding ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero six? All in favor of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero six?
I approve.
That motion carries unanimously with seven votes.
Under new business, item number six is to consider appointment to the accommodations tax advisory committee. Um, we currently have seven members on the committee. Um, two members, Mr. Jeep Banaka and Ms. Amy Fulmer, need to be replaced at this time. We are also requesting to add an eighth member. Um, Mr. Banaka will be, he's the owner of Mill House. Um, we're recommending replacing Mr. TJ Jinks, which is the owner of Monagues. Uh, Ms. Fulmer was the previous, um, is it GM? Kelly, is that right? Of the Paragon Ha- Hotel, um, and Ms. Fulmer has repla- I mean, Ms. Wines, Ms. Missy Wines has replaced Ms. Fulmer. Did I get that right? Got it. And then Mr. Charity Martin is a business owner. She has just recently opened a, um, business on Waller Avenue. She would be our eighth member to the committee. They're all here this evening, I believe.
Right. Is there a, a limit on appointees?
The law says you have to have at least seven.
No question.
That's what I said.
Yeah, but you have it written as main up there. There's a typo.
I didn't do that slide. I didn't. Somebody else did that slide.
We want our leaders to follow their swords.
Me a cop, I'm me a cop.
He's the one who leaned over and said it's Martin. I said, I know.
This is a very important text statement.
So the three of them are here this evening. If you all want to stand, um, I mean, counsel. So be, that's Mr. Jinks there, Ms. Missy Wines, and Ms. Charity Martin on the left.
Thank you.
We must confirm that y'all are agreeable to this. Yeah. Well, I know y'all do great. Enjoy. Um, need to, need to get to know Ms. Wines, but I, I enjoy the, joy, sweet indulgence and, of course, Monagues. So I think y'all be great additions. Uh, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Hutto, second by Mr. Miller. Any further discussion regarding appointment of the accommodations tax advisory committee? All in favor of appointment to the accommodations tax advisory committee as proposed?
I approve.
That motion carries unanimously with seven votes.
Right, under new business, item number seven is to consider an appointment to the Greenwood Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Uh, Mr. Hugh Butler is here this evening. He's a former police captain. For those of you who do not know him, he's in the back there. Um, and he will replace, uh, Mr. Chris Brown, who recently passed away.
All right. Mr. Butler, I guess we need to ask, are, are you willing to?
Yes, sir.
All right, great. Appreciate it. I want to appoint anyone that's not, not ready to step up to the plate. All right, do I hear a motion with regard to, uh, new business item number seven?
Motion to appoint Mr. Hugh Butler to the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
I have a motion by Mr. Bass, second by Mr. Miller. Uh, I'll, I will interject that it's certainly bittersweet. Uh, Chris Brown was a, a great friend to Greenwood and myself personally, and he is, he's missed on a number of different levels. Any further discussion regarding, um, appointment to the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners? All in favor of appointment of Hugh Butler to replace Chris Brown to the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners? That motion carries unanimously with seven votes. Thank you. I appreciate your willingness.
Under new business, item number eight is to consider appointment to the Joint City County Planning Commission. Uh, Ms. Kathy Felder recently resigned her seat on the Planning Commission and Mr. James Jones has agreed to, um, serve in that role. And we certainly miss him on city council, so we're pleased to have him on Planning Commission. And he has agreed, I can confirm.
Yeah, I don't want to assume that just because people are here, they're agreeable, you know? They could have been brought here under duress. Mr. Jones, I know when we left, I said, I know this isn't the last, we'll be, uh, we'll be working together. So we appreciate your willingness. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Hutto, second by Mr. Dean. Any further discussion regarding Mr. Jones' appointment to the City County Planning Commission? Uh, I, I know it's a very important position. Um, one we've learned is, is something we really want to make sure we understand what, the way they operate and where they're, they're thinking. So we appreciate your willingness.
Mr. Jones, your experience, though limited, is going to be incredibly valuable there. So we were very thankful for you there.
Great, thank you. All right, all in favor of Mr. Jones, uh, Mr. James Jones' appointment to the Joint City County Planning Commission?
I approve.
That motion carries unanimously with seven votes.
Um, members of the Planning Commission have to receive the oath of office. So at this time, I'm gonna recognize Tiffany and ask Mr. Jones to come up so Tiffany can minister your oath.
And this is the oath of office for officials for the city of Greenwood, with full supervision and municipal operation of the state of South Carolina? Repeat. I, James R. Jones.
I, James R. Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Affirm that I am duly qualified.
Affirm that I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of this office.
Which I have been appointed.
Which I have been appointed.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Discard, I'm sorry, discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
And the United States.
And the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I would also point out that Mr. Jones', um, appointment to the Planning Commission leaves a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals. I did not want to bring that to council before he was appointed, just because it didn't really make sense. So we will hopefully have an appointee for that on the February agenda. All right.
Do you, do you have anybody in mind or do you?
I do, but if you all have someone in mind that you want to send me, um, that'd be great. We always appreciate any names of any people who are willing to serve.
And Mr. Jones, if you've got any names, um, from having served on there.
He has made a recommendation.
Okay, great.
Um, under new business, item number nine is to consider donation of the Fire Department Skid Unit to the Wareshoals Volunteer Fire Department. I'm gonna let Ryan cover this item.
Sure. Yeah, these are, as we covered in the work session, these units are usually mounted to UTVs. Uh, we purchased this particular unit back in two thousand and ten for eight thousand dollars. Since then, it's been depreciated to essentially just salvage value of about a hundred dollars. Um, we will have the ability to use this unit for, uh, larger festivals like the Festival of Discovery. The whole purpose of these is to use, um, they're, they're just more nimble, um, and easier to maneuver than traditional apparatus in tighter spaces like festivals. Uh, we've confirmed with Wareshoals that if we were to get this to them, we'd still have the ability to use it at any time, along with the UTV that they planned to mount it on. Um, you'll recall, since then, we have purchased another, um, skid unit. It's a foam cell type unit, which is a little more efficient for us, so.
And your city ordinance requires that, um, donations of equipment are approved by council.
Just for clarification, do we need a motion, Chris, before we, before I ask a question?
Uh.
But this is related to whether I would maybe even make a motion. But, um, are we sure this is Wareshoals Vol- Volunteer Fire Department and not Greenwood County?
Well, isn't that part of the?
According to Chief Strange and Deputy Chief Hall, yes.
Is Wareshoals Volunteer?
The Wareshoals Volunteer Fire Department would be a part of the Greenwood County Fire Service.
Yeah, it actually listed on Greenwood County's website, Wareshoals Volunteer Fire Department. I just didn't know if that was, is, is it Greenwood County Fire Department? I don't understand their, their structure, but.
I don't, if I understand, they don't have a volunteer municipal fire department? And perhaps that carry, that, that particular department covers more than just municipality. Okay, we got someone.
Come on up, sir.
Wareshoals, they actually have a municipality fire department. So, I mean, they have their own fire chief for the Wareshoals, for townwide Wareshoals. Um, he does interact with Steve Holmes as the fire coordinator, but they do have their independent fire department. But, you know, they have their catfish feastable, you know, they have a bunch of events. Um, like we upgraded to our cats, which is compressed air foam system, which is dedicated mainly for grease fires and for the, when we have all the grease going on in the cooking uptown. So us having that, like, you know, Mr. Thomas said, it's appreciating the value. You know, I don't think we can get nothing back for it, but we wanted to give it to someone close that we know, be able to utilize it if we need to and when we need to during our barbecue festival.
Okay.
Is this language accurate, Wareshoals Volunteer Fire Department?
That's correct.
Okay.
I guess is, does ninety-six have a municipal fire department also?
They do, yes, sir.
Okay. I was under, for some reason, I was under the impression, we were the only ones with the.
They have their own as well.
Okay.
So actually on Greenwood County's website, it says Station One, Thirteen, Fourteen, and Fifteen are the staff stations. Here's, based on here, Kalas, Ninety-six, Thirty-four, all of those seem to be the same setup.
Yeah, I just know that's part of the county and nobody manned the actual Wareshoals station.
Right.
It's run by volunteers. It's, it's manned by volunteers, but I believe all, do all of the volunteer stations have chiefs?
They do have fire chiefs. Um, they, at one time, the Wareshoals was a, the fire chief was a full-time position Monday through Friday. Now it's more or less of a part-time position, but it was by his self.
Okay. Sorry, I was, didn't mean to make that complicated, which I tend to do, but I, I think we just wanted to make sure. We're supposed to laugh. But, uh, but I wanted to make sure the language was correct.
Thank you, Travis.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is that part of a motion that you were making?
Would you like me to make, make an amendment?
Well, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to donate, uh, Fire Department Skid Unit to the Wareshoals Volunteer Fire Department.
I have a motion by Mr. Bass, second by Mr. Abels. Any further discussion regarding the motion? All right, all in favor of donation of the Fire Department Skid Unit to Wareshoals Volunteer Fire Department?
I approve.
That motion carries unanimously with seven votes.
I did have an executive session on the agenda tonight, um, however, is, is no longer needed at this time. So that new business item, I'm just gonna skip over it, um, and move to city manager comments. Uh, I wanted to mention that we did talk about appointing some members to a, um, Building Inspection Appeal Board. Someone on council mentioned the county. I did reach out to the county manager. The county would like to appoint half the members, the city appoint half the members. So we're kind of waiting on the county to sort of get back with us. And then once we have that off the list out, we'll bring that back to you for appointment. Um, the, these upcoming events, um, the only one not included in the black box is the joint meeting with CPW. That'll be on January thirty-first, five thirty, at, um, the Sports Break Event Center. It's called Main Event. It's, it's right beside the main sports break, um, which.
We have the food drive as well.
It's not on there? Oh, it was at the bottom. The food drive, I sent an email out about the food drive. I think everybody's gotten that. Do you have some specific?
Well, it looks like we've been going on that.
I meant to drop a slide in there. I apologize. Um, so it's January thirteenth through February the third, and that's the City-County Annual Food Drive.
The weigh-in will be February sixth.
The weigh-in is February the sixth. If you want to make a cash donation, you need to do that by this Friday at five o'clock. And then with whatever cash we get, we'll go and, and buy in bulk. If you want to make food donations, you need to do that by Thursday, February. And then with whatever cash we get, we'll go and, and buy in bulk. If you wanna make food donations, you need to do that by Thursday, February second at four o'clock. You can bring those up to city hall, or there's a, you can bring them to our office, or there's a bin there right outside of the finance department. Um, and that, for anybody in the room, if you wanna contribute to the food drive, you can come up to city hall and there's a bin there, you can drop your food in.
Drop them off at each tire station as well.
Yeah, and drop it, if y'all just wanna remember, drop them off with the city and rather than the county.
That's right. We like to win.
We are the defending champs and I would like to retain the belt. Um, we got, I don't know if the county's got a head start on us, but we gotta get our, we gotta get going.
Yeah, Robbie was in newspaper with the belt.
He was in the, yeah, definitely, big picture.
Yeah. I don't think he's turned over the belt in the last eleven months, so I might go physically remove that, um, at some point. Yeah, but we, we joke and we wanna be competitive, but obviously the most important thing is we're raising, um, canned goods for folks that need it.
I know that this food drive typically fills the shelves of those three organizations for several months.
Can you, um, remind us what those organizations are again?
It's the Food Bank, United Ministries, and the Soup Kitchen.
And, uh, the Lander one there.
Lander Food Bank. Oh, good, good. I didn't know they were.
Um, that's all I have for this evening. I'll turn it over to council for any comments you all may have.
Anything from council?
Really, I, I think I would, um, like to, for us to start exploring the idea of impact fees.
Okay.
Um, I, I think we're to the point now where, where we need to, um, start looking at that, that we reverse the infrastructure reimbursement. I, I think it would be worth exploring what other municipalities our size are doing and seeing how we can, um, strategically plan our growth in the future. Um, and I, I think that if we could go ahead and start that conversation now, I, especially with the ordinance we passed tonight or the revision we made tonight, uh, the timing of that, we're not putting the car before the worst there. I feel like that could work in concert with everything that we're trying to accomplish for housing here in Greenwood.
Ms. Bowles has mentioned that to me as well, so it's on my list.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely, um, explore that option. Um, in my previous research, um, what's been pretty consistent through all the communities that I've taught with is that they've done a study, basically, to assess the growth in their area and what fees, if any, would be applicable and beneficial to the goals of the city, so.
And I know I've mentioned this to you personally, but I haven't set it out in public, but I really like to. Um, and I know that some work has been looked at other municipalities on a tree ordinance for the city of Greenwood to save some of our heritage oats. Um, it is a environment, one of the easiest environmental ways to keep air fresh is to have greenery.
Well, we're called Greenwood for a reason, so I think that's.
Yeah.
Good point.
And stormwater. And we, and Carol and Draper and I have, have discussed it. Um, I've pushed things out to Carol. We did actually, I had mentioned to, um, Carol that when I was looking, it's amazing what you can look for when you're not trying to find it. Um, I was looking for something else and found a file probably this thick where there was discussion in the eighties for a tree ordinance. So there's a lot of research in there. I'm not sure how beneficial it is in twenty twenty-three, but it's there. But I agree.
Have it in baseline.
I agree, and I'll give it to you before you leave if you'd like to have it.
Any other city county, city council comments? I'd like to, go ahead, Ms. Bowles.
Are you closing out?
We're about to.
Oh, okay. I, I just wanted to check to see if, uh, I had someone who was supposed to come to council meeting, was very interested in volunteering with the, with the youth. Doing, uh, to do work and working with, uh, city youth. I have not personally met this, uh, young man yet, but I'm not sure if he's in the audience or not.
He's not here, Ms. Bowles.
He's not?
No, ma'am.
All right, well, we will, I will call the next.
Ms. Bowles, I, I may, I may give you a shout to, to learn more about that. Um, but that's about the young man. It's timely because we, we, uh, just as a brief update, we've got our mayor's youth council, uh, meeting for the month on Wednesday. Um, excited to have some folks join us. Uh, our many youth council members joined at our, at my house last month during the Christmas party. It was great to connect them with different leaders from our community, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, also, we'd like to thank the Lander lacrosse team and many members of the mayor's youth council who attended Trash Time with Tara last Saturday, just for, for everybody's schedules. The future Trash Time with Tara's will be the, uh, typically the second Saturday of every month. That could change depending on our schedules. But the, the goal is to partner with, with groups and entities to be able to, to pick more up faster. We had an army of lacrosse, I mean, probably fifty lacrosse players and we're able to knock out.
Wonderful.
Um, but if, and I challenged them, I said, look, I want you to come out here and look at this road two weeks from now. And, um, and so you can understand the, the problem.
What group was it?
It was Marshall Road from the CVS.
Down.
Down past, uh, past New Market.
I know where you're coming.
Or to New Market there.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I, I, I really can't remember. I did, I don't wanna speak to my wife, but, um, I know she's got a group ready to go for February, but it's, again, it's planned for the second Saturday in February. And then finally, I wanna, um, let our, our wishes and prayers go out to Chief Shadoon, whose mother passed away. He's in Arkansas for her funeral, but will be returning on Wednesday. Anything else? All right, do we, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Bowles, second by Mr. Bass. Any further discussion?
Record.
All in favor of adjournment? Ms. Bowles?
Thank you.
All right, that motion carries unanimously with seven votes.